Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for coming to the public hearing for DDS' five-year plan. It is now 5:30. I think it would be appropriate for everyone to get started. My name is Joe Carvalho. I am the Executive Secretary to Commissioner Jordan Chef. Just to start off the meeting, I'd like to briefly go over some, you know, technical notes and some run of show. First, I just ask that everyone keep their microphones on mute until you are testifying. That's just to prevent some feedback and to ensure everyone can hear. And just to that end, I'm just going to take a quick moment and make sure everyone's mute right now. It seems as though everyone is. Thank you so much. So, um, so please turn off the mic. This meeting is being recorded. And the recordings and the transcript will be posted to the website. This meeting has live captions. To access live captions, you just need to wiggle your mouse and on your screen, if you're on by computer, you should see an ellipse or a dot-dot-dot symbol. And then you should see an option that says, "Turn on live captions." So please feel free to do so if that's your preference. Testimony will be given in order of sign-ups. If you are not present when called upon, we will circle back to you. If you have not signed up, please feel free to type your name into the chat box to reserve your place in the queue. If you raise your hand, it's a little challenging keeping track of the order in which we receive those hands. So we just ask that if you have not yet signed up and pre-registered to testify, you totally still can. But we ask that you use the chat function to do so. So I will do that here, just to draw your attention to the chat, if you're not familiar with Teams. If you have called in and would like to testify, we will check in periodically with phone users. When we do that, to unmute yourself, if you called in, you need to press *6 to unmute yourself by phone. If you prefer to submit written testimony and you're attending today just to listen, you can email me and I will put my email address in the chat box as well. When it's your turn to speak, when you are called, please unmute yourself, introduce yourself and mention your town and your affiliation with DDS, e.g., individual, self-advocate, family member, staff or provider. Please indicate whether you support, oppose, or offer suggestions to improve DDS' next five-year plan. Please keep your remarks to about three minutes so that we have time to hear everyone's testimony. And when you finish, the Commissioner or members of the staff may ask clarifying questions. And when you are finished, you will be placed back on mute to ensure everyone can hear the next person testifying. So without further ado, I would like to hand it off to Commissioner Chef for some brief opening remarks before we get started. Thanks so much for being here, everybody.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us, taking time out of your busy lives to spend some time with us and offer your feedback. I hope you've had a chance to read in full the five-year plan before you. It's been my opportunity over the last 10 years or 15 years. I was a private provider before coming to state service and saw five-year plans submitted by the O'Meara administration and later the Macy administration. I was part of the Murray administration and the last five-year plan. We learned a lot through some of those plans, mostly that strategic planning in a five-year period is difficult in the modern world. Certainly, when Commissioner Murray put together the last five-year plan that we're now just finishing, I don't think she had any idea, nor did I, that the last two fifths of that strategic plan would be spent crisis management handling a pandemic. As such, we have left out some of the typical types of detail in finite dates and statistics you might otherwise see in a strategic plan, knowing that in the current way, particularly as we've learned from our partners in IT, that we need to be modular and swift. We need to be able to adapt and prioritize in ever-shifting ways, whether it's a pandemic, whether it's a fiscal crisis, whether it's a political crisis, whatever that may be. So many other things dictate what the next five years will look like that I'm just not able, we as a team are not able to fully predict. But we know the general direction we wish to head across a number of areas. And I think that the plan does a lot of detailing or articulating what that may look like. The other thing I think that's important to note is it's a living, breathing document, as any good plan should be. And as I had just said, we need to be able to adapt and change based on circumstances, a whole different variety of them. And so the plan will shift and change as our needs shift and change and as the climate, the maybe literal climate, but the climate around us for business and what we change us. So I offer that to say that while there's an opportunity to provide feedback tonight, we look for feedback often. I've spent the last five summers and falls visiting with families across the state, originally in person, in small 10, 15, 20-person meetings, sometimes a little bigger than that. I meet with our providers pretty often and am available to them. I certainly meet with our legislature and the administration on an ongoing basis. I meet with the individuals we support, including a terrific group of self-advocate coordinators on an ongoing basis to receive input, to hear feedback and to get help. We don't have all the help we need to make this work. And we certainly don't have all the inputs and all the worker bees we will need to achieve everything articulated in the plan. So there'll be opportunity after tonight and as we formalize and finalize the plan. For those of you participating tonight, yesterday, or those unavailable to participate yesterday and tonight, to continue to work with us as partners to advance the mission of the department and help us achieve those goals. So with that, I'm going to turn, Joe's going to help run the role. And I will do my best to comment if necessary. But we're really here to hear from you tonight. At the end of tonight, all of the thoughts and testimony will be further reviewed by us, including a transcription from tonight and all the written testimony. What has traditionally been done is we provide an addendum to the plan that includes a lot of that feedback and ways that we might incorporate that feedback as we operationalize the plan. So with that, I thank you again. I look forward to hearing your remarks and Joe, I'll turn it back to you. Oh, Joe, hold on one second, Joe. There's a number of staff, senior leadership staff who are on the call tonight. I'm not going to take the time to read all their names. I appreciate them being here as well, taking time out of their evening. They've had a very busy couple of years working for me through the pandemic and lots of evenings and weekends and that they took time tonight to join and to hear from you is important, I think, for the department and certainly important for you and very important to me. So I want to thank them for coming out tonight. And I didn't acknowledge them yesterday and that was an oversight on my part. Thank you. Go ahead, Joe.
Absolutely. Just trying to address some technical support in the chat. So that said, the first person who has signed up to testify, and again, if you have not signed up, please feel free to do so in the chat. Just please provide your first and last name. We have several people who've signed up, the first person. If Corinne Tartaglia is available, please unmute yourself. You may present your testimony if you are present. If not, we will go back through this list of pre-registered folks once everyone else has had a chance to speak.
And a reminder, if you're calling in by phone, *6.
Yep. Corinne Tartaglia. Okay, moving on to Carol Scully. Is Carol Scully available to testify?
I am.
Oh, thank you so much, Carol. Good evening.
Good evening, Carol.
Hi. So thank you so much for this opportunity to provide feedback on your plan. My name is Carol Scully and I'm the Director of Advocacy for the Ark of Connecticut. I represent them and their constituents. First, I want to acknowledge the extraordinarily difficult operating environment over the last almost two years due to COVID-19 and are grateful for the heroic efforts of DDS and other systems stakeholders during this time. The pandemic has highlighted cracks and fissures in our support system and mitigating those has, in some cases, brought stakeholders closer together. We are generally supportive of the plan as it's laid out. The plan does not include some information that is generally found in the strategic plan. And Jordan, I believe you addressed some of this.
Hi, I don't know what it's doing wrong.
Components like clear identification of specific.
Yeah, I did that.
Agency goals and objectives to be achieved over the next five years. Definition of priority areas in the short term, year one and year two, and the long-term priorities to be accomplished by the end of year five. Development of clearly identified metrics to measure progress and the improvement for aspects of the current system that were identified as needing improvement. Additionally, the plan did not identify the initiatives that will be operationalized to address a broadening spectrum of need in the IDD community over the next five years. Or provide the goals and metrics to be used to define success for each initiative. Or define how any time-limited allocated ARPA funds will be applied to current or future programs and how those actions align to the five-year plan goals and outcomes. DDS currently has a moratorium on the development of community-based 24-hour residential settings, with the exception of individuals transitioning from Southbury Training School. Because these settings use over 80% of the state's community-based residential funds, this moratorium is of particular concern to aging parents. The ARC suggests three actions to alleviate this roadblock to independent living and those actions we submitted in our written testimony. I could repeat them, but we have other things. Many families struggle to find programming that meets the needs of their loved ones for many reasons. Implementing some of the following enhancements might help individuals and families make this less stressful, make less stressful decisions, sorry, and improve provider performance, such as increased training resources for both families and direct support professionals in areas that match the needs of the individuals seeking support. Increase the number of med-certified provider staff and lower the time period from completion of the course to certification and receiving proof of that certification. We also advocate for developing momentum and employment for people with IDD. A collaborative culture must be developed between individuals being supported, providers, families and DDS. And we have some suggestions as well in our written testimony. This effort would be greatly aided by a formal collaboration among Aging and Disability Services, State Department of Education and DDS to design and implement a statewide person-centered planning in support of a process identifying employment and community participation as a primary objective for those students with IEPs at the age of 14, before they even age out. I'm not sure what the timing is, but I'm going to say, in conclusion, the Ark Connecticut is advocating for DDS to support people with IDD and their families with supports that meet the individuals where they are in their community so that they may have the fullest life possible without barriers that inhibit choice, participation or quality of life. We thank you so much for this opportunity to participate in this process. Please let us know if you have questions or concern. Joe, you should have our written testimony. Thank you all.
Carol, thank you for your testimony. And I know that there's a lot more in writing and it's valuable to us from the ARC perspective, as we've been partners with the ARC through our history at DDS for many, many years. I only want to offer one clarifying thought or statement with regards to the moratorium on CLA and CRS development. We are, and it's not just limited to Southbury. There will be additional developments that we just asked that the regions not move any forward without blessing from the central office. And the reasons for that are that we have a number of projects coming online, similar to the project in Canton at Favar that provides affordable housing. And we have a need to make sure that we have resources for those and that we're considering people needing placement for those. Additionally, we have a higher-than-typically historic level of vacancies within our provider community. Building new homes when we can't assist providers with placing people in their existing vacancies would further, we feel, would further degrade the provider stability, as smaller providers or providers unable to build new, who can't fill their existing, would struggle financially if we were to allow further development in certain areas in certain ways. So it's not a blanket moratorium, but I do appreciate the concern that that raises for parents and the lack of understanding around our issuing that temporary halt on further development while we look to stabilize the provider community. So it's important for me to hear that. And I thank you for letting me know that that instilled fear in some of our families. And I appreciate knowing that, but just wanted to offer that clarification for today. So thank you again, Carol, for representing on behalf of the ARC and presenting.
Thank you.
All right. Up next, we have Barbara Schaefer.
Hi, Barbara, it's good to see you.
Hi. Well, my name is Barbara Schaefer. I'm here today to testify regarding the five-year plan you're proposing. I could just say, let's dive into it. I noticed throughout, you know, I'm not schooled in your expertise, but I've noticed the word shareholder throughout your proposal. And the family was considered shareholder. I don't feel like a shareholder. I have been blocked away from my family, my brother, by his caretaker. This has been an ongoing situation now for four-plus years. I've brought it all the way to Commissioner Chef. And the only difference between now and then is four years. I've asked in the past to be updated on what's going on with my brother. I take an active interest in his life and I want only the best for him. But when I hear secondhand that he's had surgery and when I ask what happened during this surgery, why didn't he go on the operating table? I'm told by his case manager that you have to protect him from me. That does not exactly get me on your side. I also noticed throughout your report, in the fiscal year 2021, 261 adults and 16 children, except time with the Public Respite Center. I can appreciate my brother's need to associate with his peers. I'm all for it. But I've begged to have him overnight in Manchester. And I've been told, no, they're concerned. But when I say, what are you concerned about? It goes ignored. Again, I've brought this all the way up to Commissioner Chef. And the only difference between now and then is four years. Direct support professionals are also employed directly through an employer of record as part of DDS' self-determination program. When I was guardian, my brother was the employer of record. Now, I don't understand how that could be because the judge in his probate case has said he's not competent to be an employee of record. But I guess that was because myself and his care, his care rate don't get along. Again, nothing's changed. I am not a shareholder here, not one bit. I would do anything for my brother. Growing up, he was, you know, all we had were each other. And when I left, Janey was brought in to take my place. As for the CITC protocols, the framework that consists of building blocks that are designed to capture the core principles and values that are important, as we begin to think differently about what it means to support individuals with disabilities and their families to have good lives. The closest I get to that is going to court, having to talk to the judge.
Ms. Schaefer, I'm so sorry to interrupt. The three minutes has elapsed, but if you'd like to try to wrap up your thoughts for the next minute or so, that'd be fine.
No, that's, that was pretty much it. I have, you know, I have no regard for DDS. I will have no regard for DDS. You have a piece of me that I'm basically not allowed to see and I'm given no reason. I don't know if you feel you're entitled to do that, but you do. And with that, I have no regard for your program. I don't encourage your program and I'm not a voter for your program.
Thank you, Barbara. I appreciate your feedback and we will look to circle back with you. It's been a little while since you and I have chatted. But thank you for taking time out tonight to share your thoughts and views.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Adrian Benjamin.
Good evening, Adrian.
Hi, hello, everybody. Let's see. My name is Adrian Benjamin. My daughter, I live in New Britain. My daughter receives services from DDS. Luckily, she attends the Hark Day Program and also lives in the Hark CLA in Weathersfield. And I am profoundly grateful for those services. I do have some concerns and suggestions about the five-year plan. Obviously, it's a huge plan and it's not like yes or no, up or down. It's more complicated than that. But I want to focus on something that I feel is a serious omission, since this is a plan for the next five years, not just how it has been. And that, that thing is actually severe autism. And I know the plan shouldn't focus specifically on one diagnosis or another, but stick with me here and I'll explain. And I want everyone to know, I don't think autism or severe autism is any more important than Down Syndrome or Fragile X or Williams Syndrome or Fetal Alcohol Syndrome or any other condition. But the reason I think we need to focus more on severe autism is there is an incredible surge in the number of cases, combined with the intensity of the needs of people that have this diagnosis. The DSM-V explains that level-three autism, which includes autism and intellectual disability, is the highest level of need for that. And that the needs for those folks are pretty intensive and often constant because of poor communication skills, as in like 30% of people are non-verbal. And often with severe autism, there's aggressive behaviors, both self-injurious and injurious to other people. So here's some data on the big picture. The CDC, which I know some people might be mad at the CDC lately, but their autism, their autism study is nothing to do with their COVID study. So they have an autism team with, that has been surveying 11 states. Connecticut is not one of those states, which is unfortunate because we would have a lot of data. They surveyed the schools and pediatricians in 11 different states. And they've just, they released their report last month that said the current rate of autism is one out of 44 people. It used to be, when I was in graduate school, it was one out of 500. And it wasn't 100 years ago I was in graduate school. So it was one in 500 in the 80s. And then every now and then you see it's, oh, now it's one in 150. Oh, now it's one in 80 and now it's one in 44. So that's jaw-dropping. But the most significant thing for DDS is not that number, but the fact that 40%, according to the CDC, of those kids with autism also have an intellectual disability. So they're going to be ours. They're going to be DDS clients. In 2019, I read a similar report from the American Academy of Pediatrics and it said 40% of people with autism had ID. And I thought, that can't be possible. That's so high. But now the CDC is confirming, validating that 40% number.
Adrian, just wanted to give you a quickly heads up that three minutes has lapsed, but if you'd like to finish your thoughts in about the next minute or so, I just wanted to give you that chance to wrap up your thoughts.
Okay. Anecdotally, I currently know families who complain that they can't find, that have, I marinate in the life of severe autism. My friends, my, the support groups I go to, the activities I'm involved in. And I hear stories of people who say they can't find a day program that will accept their son, it's usually a son, because they're too difficult, need to have too many needs, they can't accommodate them. And as far as I know, DDS doesn't have data on this. I do think it would be helpful if DDS did data on what, which of our kids, numbers-wise, have autism, so we know more about that. And that can help inform the policies and priorities of the agency. So here's my official ask. That DDS start a task force or a committee or a council to study the best practices to deal with severe autism and then develop trainings for the staff about that, as well as some more new options for day programs and for residential services that can address these very intensive and unique needs.
Thank you so much, Adrian. I appreciate it. Thanks so much, Adrian.
Thank you, Adrian.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that.
Next up, we have Edward Young. Edward Young, if you are present, you may unmute yourself and present your testimony. Edward Young. Again, if you're joining by phone and your name is Edward Young, please press *6 and unmute yourself if you'd like to testify. All right. We, again, will circle back to the folks who have signed up after everyone else has had an opportunity to testify. So after Ed Young, it would be Pamela Fields. Pamela, are you present and here to testify?
I am here. I am present.
Hi, Pam.
You, hi, Commissioner, how are you?
I'm doing all right. How are you?
Awesome. Good, thank you. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Pam Fields. I reside in Merritton, Connecticut, and I'm the CEO of the Midstate ARC. Thank you for the opportunity to submit comments on the five-year plan. I am in favor of this five-year plan with some additional expansions. This plan is critical to the future health and well-being of people with intellectual disabilities. Ensuring that all people with IDD live in a supported and inclusive community environment is essential and the programs and services developed must reflect this approach. We are excited, as you would guess, to see assisted technology as part of the plan. Midstate ARC created the Assisted Technology Center located in Merritton, Connecticut. Through our work in the center, which providers across Connecticut and the nation, we know firsthand how critical it is for people to have access to a network and a variety of services and resources. Every person is unique and their solutions and their needs and their family structure are also unique. A wide variety of options and solutions must be available in order for people with IDD to live inclusive lives in their community and to have their health and safety needs met. No longer do we live in a one-size-fits-all world. As mentioned throughout the plan, the range of services must include new and innovative services, such as expanding the use of assisted technology, individualized, supported living options, greater access to affordable housing, the resources to ensure and support person-centered lifestyles and creative employment and volunteer options for all levels of disabilities. The pandemic has exacerbated an already-existing staffing crisis. This has brought to the surface not only the increased need for collaborative opportunities, but also a need for a wide range of community-based options that are supported by a funding system, which allows individuals to flow from one support to another as the needs change and evolve. The system needs bandwidth to provide the mentoring and training, not only for the providers, but for the families and individuals with IDD, to transition to these new and innovative options. As mentioned in the plan, this menu of services must also include supports for individuals and families with complex behavioral and medical needs. Those specific services are the most complicated and are staff and time-intensive. This area is mentioned in the plan under the Health, Healthy Living section. However, more concentration on building the capacity for this population within the provider sector is greatly needed. The addition of a Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Director is a great addition if the concentration will in fact be on equity of services through the system. Creating.
About a minute left.
Creating an inclusive service model with a wide variety of services will allow Connecticut not only to meet the needs of all its residents with IDD, but also meet the requirements from CMS. Connecticut was once the leader of innovation. Connecticut was once the leader of innovation and inclusive services. We must make sure we rise to this level again. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thanks, Pam. And our DEI Director Cheryl Ellis just, just started with us. Uh, and her initial charge is to try and balance the work of diversity, equity, inclusion, both within the work, our workforce, when we have a DDS does has a robust workforce. But the other fifty percent to look at equity in service delivery, equity and access. So, and she's already getting her feet wet, so to speak. And talking to our NASDs, our National Trade Organization, about their equity work and how she can bring some of that to us. So I appreciate you pointing that out and all of your comments. You are not the first and you won't be the last person I hear from about the workforce crisis. It's, it's, it's a challenge that we all need to work on and not just for DDS, but across our sister agencies and any of the health and human service and helping professions are just unable to bring in the level of staff they need to be the safety net they have been for as long as they've been there. And we, we look to engage further on that. Thank you for mentioning it and for all of your testimony and all the work you do.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Pam. And just a quick note, if anyone who is testifying today doesn't get to provide all of their verbal testimony, please feel free to email me additional written testimony if you would like. So my email address is in the chat. Again, I'll put it there again, just in case it's hard to find. Next up, we have Lena Esposito. If Lena is available. Lena Esposito. Just one more time, Lena Esposito. All right, moving on, we have Keith Gregorian-Michelson. You may unmute yourself.
Good evening. Yes, that would be me. Thank you. So my name is Keith Gregorian-Michelson. I'm a resident of Simsbury, Connecticut. And I'm a father of one of those people that you've been talking about. Excuse me. So I'm a father. I'm a teacher by career. I also participate in Special Olympics as a coach. But because of the last five-year plan that was developed by DDS, where sheltered work environments were decided were no longer acceptable, my son is now self-directed. So that means I'm not only a father, a teacher, and a coach. I'm also a business manager. I'm a personnel manager. I'm a finance manager. I'm a vocational manager. I have to manage everything that people like Lark are doing or any of the art programs. I'm doing that on my own because there are no programs available for a child that has an intellectual disability co-occurring. My son also has epilepsy and my son has autism. So he kind of fits within that package where nothing is available for him except day service programs. And those day service programs are not a good environment for my, my child because they're not really doing anything. My child, my son wants to do something. He wants to work. But he can't work in a regular work environment. He needs the structure and the repeatability. See, kids with autism or kids that are on the autism spectrum, they need to have definitive things that are going to happen. They need to have predictability and repeatability. A regular work environment is very dynamic. Things are happening, things are changing, plans are changing. That doesn't work. But in a sheltered work environment, that works fantastic. Because they go in, they know what the expectations are, and they're able to be successful. So what I've had to do is I've had to build a sheltered work environment in my home. So that I have to hire providers to come in and, and work with him while I'm working, because my wife and I both work. So we are taking on this role as being the service providers for our child, not because we want to do that. I want to be a dad. I want to be a Special Olympics coach and I want to be a teacher. I actually have to lead my teaching profession next year because I can't manage all of these things at one time. And so I look at your plan and I say, I'm not in disagreement with your plan. In fact, I think it has some great ideas, but there's no metrics or there's no specificity. So I have no idea. You have a vocational programming. There's no
Just under a minute left. I just wanted to give you a heads up.
There's no specificity on when that's going to happen. There's no specifics on what's going to happen when. So as a parent, I am in complete limbo as to what's happening. And regards to housing, you were talking about housing in terms that I just don't understand. What I know is my son has been on the urgent, in emergency list since he was part of DDS, which he was six years old. And no one has ever even told me what the long-term plan is. So think of the stress that you're putting on families where they don't know what the future is going to be for their child. Excuse me. I mean, we very much appreciate what we do have. But if you're going to make a plan, it seems like that plan should have definitive metrics and goals and what you're working towards. I know the environment's going to change. Elon Musk is going to send people to Mars, right? He has a plan to do that and he has specific things that have to happen along the way. I think DDS has to do the same thing. It can't be, everybody gets competitive work. It's got to be, how are we going to get everybody to get competitive work? Specifically, how are we going to get there to give parents a sense for what's going to happen in the future?
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Keith. I appreciate your passion and I, and I, and I understand your circumstances. If it's okay with you, there were a couple of specific things you asked about in there I'd like to follow up with. And I'll ask one of my staff potentially to reach out to you if that's all right with you. Thank you, Keith. Again, I appreciate you coming out and saying what you had to say tonight.
Uh, next up, we have Martha Dwyer. Martha, you may take yourself off of mute. I see that you're here.
Hi.
I'm going to call you Marty. Is that okay? Is that okay to call you Marty?
Absolutely. Good. I, thank you very much for setting up this meeting and giving us the opportunity to speak. DDS did wonders for my brother Tommy, who died last year, who was at Southbury Training School. He was born in fifty-six. It became clear he had problems when he was between one and two. He was humbled until he was four. My parents were able to send him to a private school on Cape Cod until he was nine, when he started hitting himself and they couldn't handle him. He was briefly at Yale New Haven Hospital and at a regional center and then in the state mental hospital in Middletown for a number of years until he was seventeen and went to STS. When Tommy went to STS, he was in a straitjacket and on a huge dose of alcohol. And for the first couple of years he was there, he had to wear a football helmet because he would, would hit himself. And Southbury's programs enabled him to get out of restraints, generally behave. The worst he would generally do was hit his head against the wall during the night, generally for allergies. And he received wonderful care. I know it's expensive care. But when you're dealing with people who are so disabled, they require that level of care. What concerns me about the five-year plan is I don't see any discussion of people who are that disabled and what to do for them. Uh, I'm sure you have some people on the waiting list who are that disabled. And as we know, and as Keith said, some have been on the waiting list for many, many years. Although I'm not saying his son is as disabled as Tommy was. And there are people in nursing homes. I've talked to nursing home owners and operators. Their staff is not trained to take care of people with ADD and autism. It is not the proper place for them. And it's just like, it's like sticking them off in an institution of the old days. I, I have some suggestions that I'm not going to go through now about expanding services at Southbury and other places.
Marty, you have about one minute left.
Oh, great. For people who are severe, but I think there are ways to do that. And don't forget, if you add beds at Southbury, you make beds available to people who are either too disabled for group homes or on the waiting list or in a nursing home. I do note that the plan talks about expanding the continuum of residential service office options. And that's what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty, as always, for your, your story about your brother and your willingness to share it, as well as your passion about our services, even, even after he's left us. So thank you for coming out tonight and sharing.
Thank you for everything you do. Now you'll mute me or I'll mute you. I'm
You're muted. Thank you, Marty.
Thank you, Marty. Um, next up, and forgive me if I've
To me again. You're muted. Thank you.
Next up, and I apologize if I mispronounce your name, is Brita Durani. Is it Brita? Brita Durani?
Yes, I'm here. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for having me. I want to thank you also for, for making it possible for us all and me to, to speak out and speak up. And I, I fully agree with Sven Everts of the Connecticut ARC that the more goals and everything needs, needs to be more in detail. But since during these past years, my daughter is in a group home. And since during these past years, the group home life has become so gone down in quality so much. And my report focuses mostly on what's happened in this group home. And yeah, first I want to say we've been practically, we, when we spoke up and sent a complaint to the complaint department, the abuse and neglect, we were practically threatened with a veiled threat that our daughter would be expelled from her group home, which by the way, I was able to get the state to open in the year two thousand at a time when there were barely any group homes for adults with autism available in existence. All right, so we were, you know, practically threatened. So some of the things are the following. There is no transparency as, as far as what's going on in the group home. The staff management and management is hiding behind HIPAA regulations. Management is not accountable to the parents of the residents as a group. And the residents' individual requirements are ignored with the excuse that they cannot be dealt with due to the needs of other consumers. We are told that our daughter is doing too much, such as music and speech therapy. She's nonverbal, has profound autism. And that we want her to participate again in Special Olympics, as she's been doing up to the, until the recent current management started. So, uh, mental health issues such as anxiety due to changes of staff, constant changes of staff, which of course are exacerbated now during the COVID times. Lack of sleep, GI issues, stomach aches, outbursts due to anxiety are totally ignored. The residents' civil rights are ignored. Activities that are part of normal life are rationed and made not available, often under the pretext of lack of staff or vehicles, which of course are valid, valid excuses. However, we also see a lack of will to make things better. In-house and outside activities are practically non-existent. Materials for arts and crafts and, and shopping and cooking, previous activities pre-COVID are totally eliminated.
You have about a minute left to wrap up your remarks.
Thank you. Thank you. My daughter is no longer taking to activities in the community. Even shopping, which is a program for basic things as underwear, are not being done. Medically necessary tools as the iPad for communications are practically ignored and the appointments are also ignored. And medical prescriptions such as spinal issues, base PT and swimming due to scoliosis are scoffed at as parental manipulation. Not providing materials for arts and games and distraction and spending money on a sixty-five inch TV screen instead is not exactly appreciated by the parents. These are just some of the issues that could be corrected with more transparency. And what we suggest is
Thank you, Brita. If you'd like to
Yep, go ahead.
Parents Association to discuss group home issues without fear of repercussion. A parent-staff association similar to PTA in schools. Thank you for attention. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. And, and I would ask, I don't want you to share now, but if you would email Joe or myself directly some of the specific details, because we do take all issues of abuse and neglect seriously. I, I certainly do, and I believe my staff do. So I'd like to follow up on the specifics, but without doing that in this public forum, if you would be kind enough to email me some specific information about that, I would be very happy to ensure that there's follow-up. Thank you.
Of course. Yes, yes. And I've emailed it, but I will email, email it again and highlight some of these issues more. Thank you so much. Yeah.
Up next, we have Susan Lynn Metzler Marusik. Is Susan Lynn present? Susan Lynn Metzler Marusik. Again, if you've called in, please press star six to unmute yourself. And just one last time, Susan Lynn Metzler Marusik. If you're present, please unmute yourselves. All right, moving on, the next name we have on our list is Leslie Bennett. Leslie Bennett, are you present? Leslie Bennett. If you are here, please unmute yourself. All right, we have two names on the list. Again, if you are here and you did not have a chance to pre-register to testify, feel free to put your full name in the chat, first name and last name. But that said, we will go on
Joe, I, I thought Chris McTavoy had registered.
I believe she had registered, I believe she had registered for yesterday. I wasn't sure if Chris had, you know, intended to testify tonight.
Well, that's probably a, a technical glitch on my part that I thought I had done it for today.
No problem. And we have plenty of time. There are just, no, no problem at all. There are two names on the list and we'll certainly have time for Chris McTavoy. Next up on our list is Diane Salvaggi. Forgive me if I've mispronounced that.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Um, thank you, Commissioner Chef and Joseph for, for having us, voiced our, our our views. I wasn't really I wasn't really prepared to do this, so bear with me. Is there an echo?
There's a slight one, but it seems to be okay right now.
Okay. My name's Diane Salvaggi and I live in Stratford, Connecticut, and I have a thirty-three-year-old son with autism. He's on the spectrum. He's not low, he's not high, he's in the middle. He has minimal speech. I've been requesting placement for him since 2015. And I have been looking for, and I know the CCHs are few and far between. I know Kyle's case manager has rooted ones that they felt were appropriate and working with me, and I certainly appreciate that. But I'm afraid that he won't be placed when I'm seventy. And quite honestly, I'm getting tired. And I want him to be happy and I want him to be placed. I had looked at many rentals last year. I found a rental that I felt was a good fit for him and I have pursued it. But I'm really doing it because I'm just afraid he's not going to get placed. My concerns are this. I actually found someplace, he goes to a day program, which I'm much appreciative of. And I found actually some employment that he could actually participate in, but there isn't enough staff to get him to and from it. He went there and they kind of did a trial run and he's a good candidate for it. And I know it would make him happy and you know, the more happy they are, the more independent they are, the more productive they are. And I just want him to be happy. Is the funding keeping pace with the placement? You know, a one-bedroom that I found, well, a one-bedroom in Milford, the fair market value is eleven eighty-five. And the state is willing to contribute four hundred and thirty to the rent. My question to you is, is it keeping pace so that these people get the rights? The rights, enough financial support as well as, you know, employment opportunities? Please know that I'm appreciative of the services you do provide. I just want to make sure it's enough so that he lives a long, productive life like we all want for our children, whether they're autistic or not. He can't speak, so I have to speak for him and I appreciate this opportunity.
I appreciate you taking time, Diane, to share your story and your concerns. And I heard you say the town that you're from, but if you could just repeat that for me, was it Stratford or Stamford?
Stratford.
Okay, one more time, I'm struggling with the echo.
I'm in Stratford, Connecticut, next to Bridgeport.
Okay, because there's Stafford, there's Stratford, and there's Stamford.
Yeah, I know.
I didn't know where you live.
Yeah.
And we'll look, would you submit, even if not your full testimony, your name in writing? Because there have been some recent changes that we made internally around the rent subsidy program, but there's some other opportunities, including some programming on autism. I want to make sure we follow up with you on directly. So if you can, please email Joe your name and contact information. We will be sure to get back to you from there. And thank you again for providing your heartfelt testimony this evening.
Oh, thank you.
What you had to share is all too common. In my thirty years in the business and my ten years at DDS, I hear your concerns and your story more often than I'd like. And I know with the providers on the phone and the ARC on the phone, I know that they hear those stories as well. So thank you for sharing it and saying it, and we'll do some follow-up.
And Commissioner, I just want to say that, you know, Rachel, his case manager, Rachel Grimmer and Roseanne Salvo, I know they've done everything they can, but I just know the CCHs are just not out there. So that's why I have pursued this other opportunity, but I just want to make sure he's got the right supports as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our case managers are pretty, and their supervisors are pretty stand-up staff, and we're very proud of the work they do. Thank you.
So we have one last person on our official roster. They didn't provide a full first name, but it's M Zaharia. M Zaharia, if you are present, you may now testify. M Zaharia? One last time. M Zaharia? All right, well, moving on, that concludes the official list. I know that Chris McNaboe would like to testify. And after that, I will then go through the remaining lists on the preregistered list of people who would like to testify, just in case they joined late. But Chris McNaboe, if you are present, you may unmute yourself and provide your testimony.
Thank you very much, Joe. Thank you, Commissioner. I'm sorry that I mistakenly signed up for the wrong day.
Good evening, Kristen. Good to see you.
Too many meetings. It's great to see you all and thank you very much for this opportunity to comment on the DDS five-year plan. As I said, my name is Chris McNaboe. I'm the founder and CEO of Horizons in South Wyndham. Since nineteen ninety-two, when this concept was initiated, our agency has been in the forefront of many of the person-centered initiatives in the various plans over the years. We grew and built our agency, founded on the ideas that every person has the ability to prosper and grow with the right supports, staff, and environment. The key ingredient here is staff. We developed a comprehensive hiring process to attract the best candidates, train and support them as they learn to implement the successful teaching techniques to help individuals with developmental disabilities have a great life. We fundraised to pay for things our rates do not cover, so we can offer a quality, professional working environment, which has been proven to create longevity in staff. And staff longevity creates continuity and a group of professionals who can continually train the new hires and carry the torch on and on. Many good ideas are in the five-year plan. The focus on charting the life course is one of them. Daily life and employment, community living, healthy living, safety and security, social and spirituality, and advocacy and engagement all need one component that is currently at critical, catastrophically low levels, and that's staff. I know you know there is a staff crisis because we have had to pause or reduce services for over eighty-eight people we support because we don't have staff. We have over twenty-six percent of our staff positions unfilled. I know you're thinking, well, the five-year plan is not the vehicle to address these staffing issues. But I know that nothing in the five-year plan can happen without staff. Without staff, this is thirty-two pages of wishes. Technology has been publicized as a way to reduce the need for staff for some people. We use a fair amount of technology to augment our supports, but technology cannot replace the human connection everyone needs, and especially people with developmental disabilities. COVID is a big factor now and has exacerbated the years-long struggle we have had because of inadequate funding to pay and retain our professional staff, not just the entry level. Since the American Rescue Plan Act is referenced in the five-year plan, I feel we need to also address the state's use of ARPA funds and the Medicaid rates to once more bring to light how the nonprofit community of providers who deliver the majority of services to DDS cannot continue with adequate wages and cost of living adjustments to retain our staff. We need your help to advocate for our staff. Thank you.
Chris, as always, thank you for your advocacy. I know that you shared that message with us tonight. I know from history you will share that to anyone who will listen, particularly the people in the administration and up the road at the legislature. And your voice has been constant in a good way for many, many years in the industry and in your leadership. The one thing I will tell you is that it was always hard as a private provider when the people I supported at a different agency loved you more than me. And so there is just a little bit of, no, I'm kidding. Your program and the camp environment there has meant the world to hundreds and hundreds of people we support. And we appreciate the work you do. I know how challenging it is and I hope that together we can work to start to solve this awful workforce crisis.
Thanks. We can only do it together. Thanks, Commissioner.
Thanks so much, Chris. So if there aren't anybody, if there isn't anyone who's present who would like to testify, who hasn't signed up, I will go through the list of people who did preregister. There's only four names or so. Is Corinne Tartaglia present? Corinne Tartaglia? Moving on, Edward Young? Edward Young? Lena Esposito? Lena Esposito? Susan Lynn Metzler Marusik? Susan Lynn Metzler Marusik? Leslie Bennett? Leslie Bennett? And lastly, M Zaharia? M Zaharia? So that does it for our list of folks who would like to testify who were preregistered. If you are present and you would like to testify, it does not seem as though there is a lot of people who would like to. So if you would just simply like to raise your hand, feel free to do so. I see we have one hand and that's from Marty Dwyer, who, Marty?
I just muted myself. One thing I think that all of us can agree on is there's not adequate funding for DDS programs. And I think it's something all of us should try to work together on to convince the legislature that we're dealing with some of the most needy and handicapped people in the state of Connecticut and that there should be more funding, that staff should be paid better, that there should be more funding for homes, that there should be facilities for people who are severely disabled, et cetera. And I'm hoping someone has a suggestion on how to organize this group and other people who are concerned to seek more funding.
Marty, thank you. In fairness, I just would like to make sure that there isn't too much further comment beyond that to everyone else who presented testimony as well.
Marty, I appreciate you saying that. And Joe, you're right, we have to stay within the bounds of that fairness. I will say that it's terrific to hear that from you, Marty. I know that you have been the face of the Home and School Association, which has often been vilified for their role in sustaining Southbury. But your willingness to work with people both in public and private for the betterment of the entire DDS is generous of you and your willingness and your commitment. I wanted just to recognize that. I thank you for that, Marty.
Thank you, Jordan. What about suggestions on how to try to make this happen?
Well, the purpose of tonight is specific to the strategic five-year plan. I can assure you that we can provide you the name of advocates. I know that the ARC is on the call tonight. And you guys have been in different positions in the past. Our ombudsman is on the call tonight. We have a lot of staff. There's a number of family members who seemed maybe slightly less connected than other family members, who may be looking for a way to get involved. But tonight would not be the organizational meeting for how we go about getting more money. It certainly wouldn't be within my role as an appointee of the governor to bring that group together to go ask him for more money. And I won't do you that kindness tonight. So, but I appreciate the thought. And you know, you can find the names. The meeting is recorded and will be published. So if you want to talk to these folks, you have been resourceful in your role for many years. I'm sure you can find them.
And they can find me?
Yes, they can. With that, I just want to say, you know, a wide variety of feedback tonight from providers to families with loved ones in care with DDS, to those wishing they had more care from DDS, hearing about both the challenges and the strengths the system currently brings. Some of the strengths of the plan, some of the failings as some see it in terms of the strategic nature of it with the specifics and timeframes that we hope to operationalize as we make these priorities based on funding and other issues ahead of us, including COVID. Thank you all for coming out tonight. I want to thank my staff for listening with me. And one of them who helped heavily with the plan, Katie Rockburns was not able to attend tonight, but she'll be watching this as she will be helping me finalize this five-year plan. Deputy Commissioner Mason's out there. There's a number of folks, our staff from, some regional directors are out there, maybe all of them. Our staff from South Barrier on the call tonight. Human Resources, I mean, there's a good catchment. Head of Health Services, Dr. Val Bagby Young has joined us as well to hear those concerns. And I want to thank you all for sharing them. And we hope we can do the plan before you justice and including improving it. As I said, it's a living and breathing document and we hope to progress with it. Thanks again. Joe, thank you for organizing and for facilitating this evening. I really appreciate that. As you know, I'm easily distracted, so your willingness and ability to do that keeps me on point. I appreciate it.
Of course, of course, Commissioner. And if anyone didn't submit testimony yet and would like to, please feel free to email me. My name is on the website when you Google DDS.cT.gov/fiveyearplan. There's plenty of links to my name there. So please feel free to email, whether it's your testimony or if you have concerns otherwise. Anyways, I hope everyone has a good evening. Thank you for joining us tonight and take care.
Thank you.